So, good evening and welcome. You can probably tell we are at capacity this evening, and we have quite a few voters in the gymnasium as an overflow area. So, we are going to, at least I am, for a few minutes, your moderator and I, going to ask for patience, kindness, and respect for any of us through this process this evening, please. This is a little off my wheelhouse, but we're going to start. We do not have a moderator, an elected moderator in place for this evening, and we have Mr. McGary, who has offered his services to help us out. So, I would like to make a motion. And here is a second, a motion to, to elect Jim. Is there a second? Thank you very much, and I am going to defer to Mr. Killman, the chairman of our board of selectmen, to cast one vote in favor because we have to be that way.
I cast one vote for Jim McGary.
Do we have a second?
We have a second.
Thank you. Congratulations. You're welcome. Let's go, moderator, for the evening. Send your word for which your right hand. There you go. Do you solemnly swear that you will honestly, faithfully, and personally perform to the best of your ability with the duties for which you have been appointed or elected, excuse me, in accordance with the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the bylaws of the town of Sheffield? So, hope you got it. Thank you. There will also be an opportunity, once, once voting is getting ready to commence, I will have a couple of instructions for that. So, if you could be patient, we'll get to that in just a couple of moments. Right hand, for two, one, two.
All righty, yeah. I'm not so sure that this is gonna work. All right. If you would please stand, pledge allegiance, and we'll get this done. All right, do brown rules. Yeah. You have a sound duty. That didn't take long. Okay, well, they're taking here the sound duty. Let me just see in the display the green card. If you have to have a green card in order to speak, if you wish to speak, if you come up, show us, display the green card, follow by your name and your address. There shall be a three-minute window of opportunity for your presentation. Once said and done, it will give all the people an opportunity. And at some point in time, if there's nobody there, you can come up for a second time. Will you make that up? Is there a, 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 there? Very good.
Use the mic!
I'm using the mic. All right. As we get to, get ready to kick off here, a couple of things. As people are speaking up here, there's a lot of people here. Everybody's got a different sort of opinion, one way or another, whatever it is. We will be treated respectfully to the people that are at the mic. No secondary noise, because it becomes distracting to people making the presentations. And as such, otherwise, we're gonna be in good shape. In order to be in this room, you have to be a registered voter. And as I say, we will give an opportunity for people to speak. However, if we start to get repetitive of what is being said, then I would, I would entertain a, a motion to move the question, but not, not off the, at the start. All right?
Mr. Moderator, I need a moment.
Sure.
To catch, catch up the voters in the other room, please.
Okay.
They're having a hard time hearing. We're working on it, but...
This is the job of somebody with a lot of patience, and I'm running out of mine right now.
Mr. Moderator, are you limiting the amount of time each person may speak?
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
Three minutes. Yes, yeah, about the only thing I can really do well myself, although it will be all sudden. When it's all sudden done... When it's all sudden done, and we get into the voting process, we're gonna, it's gonna be an orderly vote. There'll be some firemen that'll assist us in identifying the roads to exit to come down. Go to this booth right here, and from there, go over to the loading machine. So, they'll come up, they'll identify the roads to be released to come on down, and we should be somewhat successful in a timely voting process. Are we in business now?
Okay, I think we're ready to proceed.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Could I have a, could I have a, I, I move for the, uh, waiver of reading the motion. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All right, thank you. And we also have, I also want to make a motion to waive the reading of the article as printed. Do I have my motion to, here is a second to that. On green card, please. Oh, this is not so bad. Now, we will open it up. For people who wish to speak, there's a microphone there, a microphone there, and one up in the back. Uh, and if somebody has difficulty in, in needing to know, if you make, you know, to one of the firemen out in the back, we'll, we'll be able to find them by portable microphone, okay? Okay. At this point in time, I'll recognize the chair for the motion that's in the morgue.
I'll move that we moved the motion as written in the morgue.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
All in favor? Very good. All right, so anybody who wants you to speak, please come to the microphones. Give, put your card up. Give us your name and address. Three-minute time limit, and we'll go from there. Only once.
My name is Afton Balatini, and I live at 250 Water Farm Road. I served on the school committee for eight years, and I'm the parent of two recent graduates from Southern Berkshire. There are many reasons to oppose this consolidation, not the least of which is the logical progression of this adventure will be the entire closing of this campus. However, the point I want to emphasize tonight is that for the entire time that there has been planning, three years, there has not been a single attempt made to integrate the operations of the two districts. The planning board did not overlook this. It is specifically projected. In my opinion, if you're trying to combine two entities with different histories, different philosophies, and different cultures, a logical path forward would be to try things out first, evaluate the strengths and weaknesses, and see how they fit. This district has assets beyond the students that it could supply to a new school in Great Barrington. Why squander these assets? Why don't you see what you have and build on that before you plan the future? It's kind of like paying the bill first and ordering the meal after. It's also hard for me to shake the question. Is it necessary to have a new school in Great Barrington to service a new district? Or is it necessary to have a new district to justify a new school? Shouldn't we have dated before we got married? Thank you.
Okay, I left that part out. We'll, we'll hold the applause until the end, we all going out the door, okay? Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I'd... I'd like to move to take the question by secret ballot and dissolve this meeting when the results are announced, as a procedural matter.
Is there a second? All in favor? Very good. Sure.
Christopher Nye, Rhodeville Road. I've been educator since 1965, and I work with a couple of organizations that are still active, even though I'm ancient myself, in the leadership of my organization called Educate the Whole Child. It's a small national organization, and I think I understand how kids learn and what's best for them. When I was a sophomore in Danbury High School, a big regional high school, at the end of my sophomore year, I went to my parents and said, "Look, I'm just a number there. I'm not learning anything. Can you send me away to someplace where I can get a better education?" So, they sent me to a prep school over in New Lebanon called Darrow. It's about 125 students, and the transformation was really remarkable. I got to play varsity sports, which I never could have done as a scrawny kid in a big high school. And I began to buckle down as a student and got into a couple of SUNY colleges. I think that the folks in Great Barrington understand big, but they don't understand small. They look at the size of their fire station. They closed all the neighborhood schools and consolidated them so that every child has to ride the school bus and put them into a big factory-sized building. Not ideal, not as good, nearly as good, as in Marlboro Central, for example. A wonderful old school with cranky floors, but the learning environment there is really terrific. The notion that school has to be big in order to be good just doesn't work out. Waldorf, Berkshire, Waldorf High School in Stockbridge has less than 100 students and no cafeteria, no gym, no library, but they have a do a fantastic job and turn out a great product. So, appreciating all the hard work that was done by this committee, a lot of, all the sacrifice and time went into this, but it was, I think the decision they came up with was more based on the quality, on the quantity of the numbers than on the quality of the education. So, I'm going to vote against this, and I think that's what's best, party sentence.
All right, we're gonna get a life-enriching experience. If you wish to speak, you're gonna have to come up to the podium and, and share it with me, and because they're having a problem with the, with the speakers, so... Yeah, if you'll come on up. You might wanna adjust the light.
Bonnie Silver, 15 Bowauer Road. I am a member of the regional planning board, and I am also a member of our school committee and chair at this point. I am here to give you a bit of information from a student, and I, I felt it was very important to share what he shared in there. So, I'm leaving out most of it, but, um, I'd like to give a perspective that's often overlooked. My name is Nathan Tendrup, and I'm a senior at Mount Everett High School. I find it disappointing how many people have forgotten students in towns, treating us like statistics, not like the people we are. On the other hand, there are a number of people in our towns who have pride and a commitment to the success of our students. To begin, almost every student I've spoken to is against the merger. We don't fear for our own futures, we fear for the future generation. Mount Everett has given me the opportunity to participate in athletics, student government, National Honor Society, National Art Honor Society, the Rotary International, recently the Trans and Rural Design Program, and I'm more than happy to be so involved. I have also known that my ability to take early college classes can go away with the ending of the relationship with our college of Simon's Rock, if there is a merger. I've taken eight college-level classes through Mount Everett and truly found my place and potential in my academic ability. Very quickly, I learned a lesson. My personal accountability, as late work was not accepted, and I was expected to be able to have an open discussion about various aspects of the given place and topic, piece and topic. Now, there's the idea of school climate. Nathan's like one editorialian who's actually bringing forward the difference in our climate. Each school has its own appeal for each student. Mount Everett emphasizes individuality, providing the appeal of a private education to public students. Teachers build lessons around each student's learning styles and do not hesitate to make a change to make, to better suit the class population. I also have to bring up that the Eagles are Spartan, and Spartans are truly divided. It's been a rivalry ever since the birth of both schools. Monument students have a sense of superiority over Mount Everett students. And I just want to give you one example. When we play Monument, we have the most injuries and level of disrespect compared to any other games in the season. I have 30 seconds. Okay. I know that every time I have had any issue, I can bring it directly to the principal or to the assistant principal, counselors, et cetera. We do not mix well. Eagles and Spartans are like oil and water. And the last thing. Mount Everett has given me so many opportunities to excel and truly express myself in ideas in ways I wouldn't have been able in a large school. Our building is safe, well-maintained, modernized, and a second home for many of us. Our teachers are important to us as we are to them. Our administration truly cares about who we are and what we stand for, valuing our physical, emotional safety above all. And we're out of time, but these ends with please vote no. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
I need to ask to pause for a moment to catch the other room up, please.
All right.
We're having, we're having some communication issues.
Very good.
Okay.
Smoke signals are next. This is not a set vote. We're on pause. It's Yubisha. The motion for a challenge is... For good? All right. Come right up, speak, speak right up, let's hear it.
Good evening. My name is Ben Dawson. I live at 59 Main Street. I have my wife and five children. Four of them are lucky enough to be students at the school. We originally chose to go to the school up north, and we chose to come home, and we're very grateful to make that decision. My children are much happier. They're treated as individuals, and they have a lot more options here. They can choose college credits in high school, or they could choose vocational. From my understanding, we really don't have either option up there. Also, speaking to the level of attention paid to each student and families, and the communication from teachers, and also, there's actually a vision at this school for our community and everyone who lives in it. And I couldn't appreciate that more, having experienced both places. My father's lived in Sheffield for 20 years, and while we're not local yet, we're getting there. But we appreciate being here very much and plan to make it our home for a long time. I wanted to point out as well that there are many people who, who may not have the resources to make such a long drive. I'm thinking of some kids who play sports or want to do after-school activities, who may live in Clayton Road, New Marlboro, Mill River, whose parents work an evening job. And now, one way to school would be 35 minutes, the other way would be 35 back. In my work, we factor something called opportunity cost all the time, where if you lose an hour, what did that cost? What did that cost the family? And in the economic analysis that was presented to us, they failed to calculate the millions that we would all lose by having to go much further. And they said we would save $100,000 in taxes. And I think many of us have seen our taxes go up by more than that, almost every single year. So, it was basically immaterial what they proposed to us. Further than, furthermore, why would we go for a bigger school with a poorer curriculum? Doesn't make any sense to me. I also went to a consolidated school over in Columbia County for the first year they consolidated, and I left after one year. Because it was the same curriculum, same teachers, and an expensive building, same problem persisted. They just had nicer-looking floors. I think, last point, we have a beautiful set of facilities here, and I think it would be a colossal waste of millions of dollars to leave this behind. Thank you.
All right, get ready.
Ilana Steinhauer, 94 Roue Lane. It comes up quite often in these meetings that small is good, but research clearly indicates that when it comes to high school, too small is not. Limited class selections, fewer services, and limited social interaction can all have a detrimental effect on students' development and achievement. Over 50% of high school students from every town except for Sheffield are already choicing into Monument. Per DESI data in 2022 to 2023, Southern Berkshire has one of the highest attrition rates in the state and the highest in Berkshire County at 10.8%. This number is increasing yearly. In last year's, in last year's Sheffield budget, our costs for VOTEC increased 20%, and our capital assessment for the Sheffield school increased 14.7%. These costs have continued to increase over the past three years. This process has been going on for three years. I have attended many different meetings, focus groups, community conversation, and it is often the same community members who attend every meeting. These have been, there have been endless and endless opportunities to get engaged. Our towns will have the most votes going forward during the time when our decisions matter most. So, please stop saying we have been left out of the conversations and start focusing on the future of our students. Finally, from everyone I've spoken to who went through this process when we regionalized into our current district, they had the same concerns, and no one I've spoken to regrets it. I encourage a yes vote. Let's focus on a sustainable solution that gives all, all our students the best possible chance at an innovative, enriching, and successful education.
There's nobody at the mics. Mr. Moderator, Field Chamberlain, 115 Railroad Street. I'm, I make a motion to call, I make a motion to call, call the question. We have the vote now.
Mr. Moderator, I need to ask for more patience for the other room because we're gonna have to do a count in there as well. We have to do a count in the other room as well before we call the vote.
Okay.
Or make a declaration, okay? Let me know when you're ready in this room, and then I'll go to the next.
So, do we have a second?
Yes.
All right. Now, we have, we're voting in the other room as well. See, this is gonna take a little time. Have a little patience for this. We'll go from there. It's two-thirds majority. We'll try it with a beep, with everybody standing first. If that doesn't work, then we're gonna have to go to counters. All right, so all those in favor of moving to question, please stand. Thank you. Please sit. All right, I had a good idea if we went the other way. Those opposed, moving to question, please stand. All right. The motion's carried, and we have the count. But at that point, when they take care of the next room. If you're wondering why the young lady keeps whispering my ear, that's, that's my legal conscience. I have no hopes of being free tomorrow. I have no hopes of being free tomorrow. Mr. Moderator, reiterating, when you vote, the rows will be released by the firemen. You'll come down, you're here, you'll vote. And I hope I'm not getting too far ahead of myself. But once we go to the vote, that is the end of the meeting as we're doing it. There'll be no more discussions. The next thing will be is announcing the number. What does... How many in favor and how many against, okay?
Mr. Moderator? We have a yes vote to move the question.
We have a yes vote?
Yes.
Okay. More than two-thirds of the people have a vote in favor of bringing that question forward. So done. We will now move on to the voting process. And I believe Felicity's going to come down here and add on to what I've been talking about, what I've been saying.
Okay, so we just wanted to give you a slight overview. Number one, those green cards that were spoken about earlier, you have to have that green card to vote. It is going to take some time to get almost 700 people through the voting process. Pack your patience. What we are going to do tonight, when your row is called, or starting with this section over here, the first row will come up, turn in your green card, receive your ballot. Three people at a time will be able to vote at the table. You vote your ballot, it's yes or no. Fill in the oval, please, completely. No checks, no Xs, no squiggles or graffiti of any kind. Fill in the oval properly like you do when you vote at the senior center. Clear, concise votes will make things go quicker. You will then deposit your ballot into the ballot box, just like you do for elections. Face down, please, we're asking, it's a one-sided ballot. Put it face down, I don't want to know how people voted. I'm sorry? Yes, yes. Yes is for the consolidation. No means that you are not in favor of it. Okay? Any other questions about the voting process? The other piece to this is that you'll come down this aisle regardless of when you're voting. You'll make your way here, down this aisle, take care of business down here, and then you'll go along the wall. You may either leave or return to your seats. The meeting has already been adjourned. Okay, so yes, we are asking that the fire department slash emergency services have an opportunity, and then we're going to our folks that need some assistance, and I think our veterans. We're going to get them through first in case they do have a fire call. We're going to get these guys through so they have an opportunity to vote, since we've made it this far. So, anyone from the fire department? And somebody can check with the other room, please, and see if there are any emergency services, veterans, or anyone that needs assistance. Does everybody understand how we're doing this?
Yeah.
I guess the recommendation as well is to allow anybody that doesn't want to stand at this table and fill out your ballot. You can go closer to the ballot box, hold it in your hand if you want, grab a pen, fill it out, and put it in the box. I just ask you to please be polite when you're going through the line. Somebody's in front of you, don't come in on. Is there anyone else in this room that's going to require us to come to you with the ballot? Okay, thanks. May I have your attention, please, for just a minute? Is there anyone else in the first section that needs assistance? Okay, when your section is going to be voting, then we'll call for a vote for assistance. I'm just seeing a raise of hands, okay? Okay, I'm interrupting you one more time, please. I'm sorry. Thank you. So, town council has offered that maybe thought on this to get things moving a little bit quicker, which we knew would take some time. Results will be within one minute or less after we're done. If you are comfortable, it's entirely up to the voters. Give us just a moment, we'll slide this table down, we'll get another section going. So here's the deal, though. Your ballot will not go into the machine immediately if you are comfortable. Placing voting, placing it on the table upside down. Once you've voted, you relieve it, and as time allows, we will feed them through the machine. It's up to you. If you do not want to do that, then don't. So, it's an option, but we're also going to call you. I don't want everybody coming up here at once. I apologize if this is a little different for us. We have, I think, a record-breaking number of people, and this is an important vote, so just bear with us, please. Actually, I think what we may try and do is get some of the folks from the other rooms started. It's okay with that, too. Okay, so in case it... Excuse me, in case it wasn't clear. We're not... We're going to finish this section, I think. I did not say that, and I apologize. We need to get through this section so that things stay somewhat orderly, and then we're going to move to another section and get another line going. All right, just give us a minute. Okay, thanks for your patience and for waiting. I knew it was going to be a little bit long to do that, but anyway, yes votes for 99, no for 503.